Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Lewis, board members, and region chiefs for their vote of confidence in allowing me to serve in my new role as assistant principal for the upcoming school year. I am forever indebted to the late Mr. Tommy Bassett and Mr. Chris Cox for being the first to plant the seeds of administration upon me. Next, I wholeheartedly give a big thank you to Ms. Stephanie Dalton Falk for being a great mentor, an exemplary leader, and role model. I would like to thank my husband, children, family, and friends for their love and support. To Ms. Thompson, thank you for allowing me to grow a new year leadership. And to Dr. Williams and Midland Academy, I am so excited to come on board and do great things for our Midland Cubs. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, family, stand up. Where's family? All right, congratulations. 4.10 Superintendent is recommending the appointment of David Hughes to serve as assistant principal at Rothschild Leadership Academy. Motion by Ms...so moved by Ms. McCray, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? We're ready to vote. Congratulations, Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, everyone, to the board, to the board chair, Dr. Lewis, to all of our region chiefs and all those assembled. I just would just like to say thank you, and I'm grateful and humbled at this opportunity to add the next step in my journey as an educator. I would like to just thank those who I would not be here without. First and foremost, my wife and our beautiful daughters. I am just so grateful and thankful to you for the inspiration that you are, the love and the support and the challenge that you all give me every day. I'd like to thank our special family that is here today, Virgil and Trina, thank you very much for your presence, and all of those who are watching from Massachusetts, from different parts of Georgia, from Florida, who are here cheering me on in spirit. I'd also like to say to my East Columbus family, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've poured in. Ms. Magwood, Assistant Principal Hunter, who is here today, also Dr. Mike Sekinger, who left us as assistant principal to principal last year, and just everyone at East Columbus. It's a wonderful place and a wonderful family. Lastly, I'd like to say to my Rothschild family, to Principal Deloach, I can't wait to get there and get to work. Go Falcons.
Congratulations. All right, family, stand up. Stand up, family. Congratulations. And 4.11 Superintendent is recommending Ms. Dorsey to serve as assistant principal at Spencer High School. Motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any questions? We are ready to vote now. I'm waiting on mine if you would just mark yes. All right, that passes.
Thank you, thank you. First giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. Without him, I wouldn't be able to stand before you today. To Dr. Lewis and your cabinet, the board, thank you for the votes allowing me to continue in my career in this new capacity. I would like to thank my mother, Regina Dorsey, my sister and brother-in-law, Morgan, and Terrence Robinson, Dwayne, my sister Nakira, all of my family, extended family, friends, and colleagues, and my sorority sisters that may be here or not here of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Thank you for supporting me through this journey. To Ms. Patterson, Mr. Church, faculty and staff at Spencer. We are the hidden gem of the South Side. We will continue the hard work and uphold the high standards we set for our students. Dr. Freeman, thank you for believing in me and enrolling me in the Freeman University of Leadership. In your words, Spencer gets them ready. When I became a Spencer faculty member, I remember telling my grandmother, who graduated from Spencer, that I was going to be working at her former school. She was, at the time, about 90 years old. She said, "My Spencer High School? Where is it now? I heard they moving it." So she said, "Well, as soon as they finish building it, make sure you take me to the building." She was completely bedridden at that time, so I showed her the pictures of the new building. It was either on my laptop or my mom's iPad. I lost her at the beginning of 2020. I know she is smiling down on me right now. Excuse me. And as a product of Muskogee County, I echo a sentiment that was made at a prior principal appointment where the principal said, "Public education works." Thank you. Go Green Waves.
Okay, Green Waves. Smile, smile, and stand up and wave while you're on the camera. Congratulations. All right, board members, we'll go to the public agenda, and then we'll finish up our action agenda. So congratulations to all of the appointments. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Harkness, for being an air traffic controller, and Dr. Anderson, and everybody, actually, I saw Dr. Smith, yeah, everybody was pulling the weight. The public agenda, we do have three signed up. The first three? Okay. Alexander Greenfield is first, then Taria Jones, and then Otis Hailstock. We'll call you in that order. First is Alexandria Greenfield.
Hello, and good evening, everybody. My name is Alexandra Greenfield. I'm a sophomore at Northside High School. I'd like to begin by thanking Dr. Lewis and the board and all the directors and cabinet for having me here tonight to speak. So when I ran for the state superintendent advisory council a few years ago, one of my biggest platforms was the importance and just the overall benefit of dual enrollment and CTAE programs. And as you guys have seen from all the amazing kids here tonight, it works, and I'm so proud to be here tonight, too, as a personal experience and anecdote, that these programs are beneficial, and it's worth it to invest and keep running them the way that we're doing right now. So I've always been goal-oriented and ambitious, but there's no way that any of my goals could have been met without the support of my teachers and counselors at Northside High School. Ms. Redondo, our amazing dual enrollment counselor, helped me to take my first steps to become the first dual enrollment student to start my freshman year of high school. And dual enrollment really allows me to maximize my schedule and pursue all the multiple pathways, interests, passions, and everything that I enjoy. So I'm a member at Northside, I'm a member of the biomedical magnet program where I can learn about biotechnology, I can shadow our student athletic trainer, Ms. Tiff, out on the football field, and I'm CPR certified, cert skills certified, and stop the bleed, and so many things I wouldn't have the opportunity to do without Northside Biomed. And by taking some of my core classes at Columbus State, I have more room to take AP classes like calculus, AP bio, along with orchestra, chorus, and I hold a leadership position for our junior ROTC at our school. So all of this allows me to have the balance and the flexibility to be well-rounded in what everyone calls the three As, academics, arts, and athletics. So I play violin and viola for the youth orchestra of Greater Columbus, I sing in all-state and all-district honor choirs, and thanks to dual enrollment, I can be a student at the Shroeb School of Music, where I sing in our choral union program. And just overall, I love my school. I love Northside, and I love all the opportunities that we have, thanks to our administrators and teachers. We're able to balance a rigorous curriculum while still engaging all of our students, every single one of them, to be successful in extracurriculars and sports. I'm currently the first and the only gold medalist level figure skater in Columbus, and even though that my... Thank you. And obviously, my training and competition schedules can get very hectic, but my teachers have always been understanding and supportive to all of my endeavors. And so without dual enrollment, it's impossible for me to balance everything, to fit everything in, and it would be even more difficult and painful to sacrifice any of my passions and interests. But everything that I get to do makes me more confident as a person, and it makes me inspired to learn and do better, to give back to these people that are giving so much to me and giving me all of these opportunities. So it helps me want to, it makes me want to serve my school and help give back to my community. So at this point, I hope you guys can see how amazing Northside is, how amazing all these programs are that we offer in our district. But it doesn't just benefit me, and it doesn't stop there. I was actually, I just was, I was just accepted to the Georgia Tech dual enrollment program as well, so now I can branch out of Columbus and just Columbus State. And students, the high school students that are accepted to the Georgia Tech dual enrollment program have profiles similar to the top quarter of Georgia Tech's first-year students now. And actually, my summer semester for, and my first computer science course started today, so I'm very excited about that. And all of this is paid for under dual enrollment. And not only that, I was also awarded a $1,000 scholarship from the College Honor Society, which is another opportunity from dual enrollment. And Northside is the best place, not only for me, but for many other students, too. It helps everyone reach their full potential. As you guys have seen tonight, our work-based learning students, our CTAE, our Skills USA, they've gone on to be Pratt &amp; Whitney interns, international HOSA competitions, marketing, service academy appointments, and so many other distinctions. So with work-based learning, CTAE, dual enrollment, and high-quality APs, Northside has a place for everyone, and it helps us become better students and better people. So overall, I would like to close and just urge everyone to explore all the options that they have, to be proactive and to be able to take advantage of all of these programs, and to think through and take advantage of all of the different opportunities that we have throughout high school. And so thank you again to Dr. Lewis and the board for having me here tonight, and I would just thank you so much, and have a great night.
Congratulations, Alexandria. What grade are you in again, Alexandria?
Alexandra.
What grade are you in again?
Oh, wow.
Alexandra, thank you so much for sharing that and your experience at Northside, but so many of our schools have many opportunities like this, and you're taking advantage, everyone. I only have one question, when do you sleep?
I'm telling you.
Well, you are outstanding from the standpoint of being a really well-rounded student, so congratulations. I know your parents are proud of you, and we certainly are as well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Our parents, stand up. I know you're videoing. Alexandria, send you the link. And actually, Mr. Pleasant, we could just clip that?
That's what I was, that was my comment.
Oh, okay, and just loop that because it talks about all of the opportunities that this one student is taking advantage of, and every student can't do that. What Alexandria didn't say is a lot of hard work, and she's focused and studious enough to put in that kind of hard work and that kind of dedication. But it's available to every single student, and it is such a wonderful opportunity. Thank you for coming and letting us know you can do it all. And it's all for free. It's all for free. Thank you to the Georgia lot, yeah.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say pretty much what you said, but I was thinking that we should put her on the road for Muskogee County. Because as I, as I listened to you, you were talking about your experiences of Northside, but your main focus was what high school offers, and that all students should take advantage of what high schools offer. And that goes all the way through Muskogee County, so we need to think about putting her on the road as our sports person, a very good sports, and congratulations for all that you do. I was just so impressed, and I was just all, when you said one thing, as I became amazed with one thing, you went to the next thing. Wow, just, I know your parents are very proud of her.
We're thankful, parent, and all of the support we could have done, all of that, that the financial support from you on enrollment, that we got CSU Bill, she got 10 credit last semester.
10 credits?
And then with Georgia Tech, it's like $500 per semester, and all that.
Wow. So Mom is saying, I'm stating it because the people in the audience can't hear what you're saying because you're not at a microphone, so Mom is just talking about the funding of dual enrollment coming through the state of Georgia through the HOPE grants, and so that's what Mom is saying, and that she's most appreciative of, as well as certain university scholarships, as Alexandria pointed out. This slide that you want to...
I've known Alex since she was at Britt David. She was best friends with my son, and she's always been impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you so very much. That is awesome. You made me forget to read our disclaimer, but Taria Jones, what about Otis Hailstock? All right. So as Mr. Hailstock comes, the citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such concerns through Ms. Jones at superintendent's office, and thank you so much, Mr. Hailstock, for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Lewis, superintendent, and the board at large, I'm here on the behalf of the bus drivers and other employees of the Muskogee County School District Transportation Department. And before I go into it, I know I don't have five minutes, but this is gonna be quick. When I came to be a part of Muskogee County School District, a question was asked, why you want to be a bus driver? And my answer to that was because I believe I could make a difference. And out of the 15 years that I've been here, I know I have made a difference. I stood right there before y'all at one time because I was making a difference on the bus because a child got choked on the bus, and I was able to save his life. So, and other things that's happened on the bus. So I'm here to appeal to you all that this change that's trying to be made and with the paydays, we fought as bus drivers to get the payday like it is. We were once a month, we fought to get it every two weeks, okay? Now, we feel like, and we don't, we're not fighting change, you know, we're not fighting the change. What we are fighting is that we should have had the opportunity to say yes or no to whether we wanted to change that over. So, you know, I'm here because we should have been at least ask, do we want to change our payday? We were getting paid every 10 working days. Now they wants to be changed to every 15 working days. You know, people have budgeted, you know, their selves to how we get paid, and now they gotta change all that. It's like an uproot, you know? And I'm saying that in representing the bus drivers and other employees of the Muskogee County School District, which is in the transportation department, you know, I'm just saying that we should have had the opportunity. I listened to the board meeting when it was said that was, the question was asked, was everybody on board? And the answer was yes, including HR, okay? We never seen any survey or any paperwork saying anything, so I'm wanting to know how, who's the people that's on board, you know? I mean, we were not even notified about it until it was shelved down our throat. So I'm here to appeal, and a lot of the drivers, they're not comfortable with this. And so I'm here to let you all know that we should have been recognized, you know, as bus drivers, and sometime we get, we look at situations that happens, and the situations are that, well, bus drivers, they're just bus drivers. I think we are a very important part of the Muskogee County School District, and I think we ought to be recognized as such, you know? And, but sometimes we feel like, oh, we ain't nobody, you know? But if it wasn't for the bus drivers, the teachers wouldn't have nothing to do, you know? I mean, you know, they, it's always about the teachers, but if we didn't get the kids to the school, what would they have to do? You know, a lot of parents are working, they can't take them in their cars. So i-if that was the case, then why you have a bus fleet? You know? So I'm just saying, we should, before this is a final decision, you know, we should at least have a chance to say yes or no. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hailstock. Board members, we'll move into our...Mr. Young is not here, right? Yeah, I thought that's what he told me. Mr. Young is not making it this evening. Next, we'll go into the remainder of the action agenda.
Before we do that, can I just make a comment or ask personally? Information. I know that we did talk about this at the retreat, and we did ask the question about how the bus drivers felt about it, and I know that we are moving into the power of "we," so I want to make sure that everyone feels like at least their voice is heard, not that anything would change. But I would like to know, we were told as the board that they preferred this particular way to receive their pay, so I would like to know, did we survey them? How did we get that response? And you don't have to answer tonight, but I would like that sent to the board if possible. And who was surveyed? If we surveyed them, who were surveyed, and how did we come to that? Because we rely on the information that's given to us, and we just want to make sure that everyone was included and had an opportunity to have their voice heard, because people are on a budget, and if we change and they get paid five days later, how much time did they have to prepare for that, and how did we reach out to them to get their response prior to bringing it to the board for a vote?
Which group was it? Was it all of the employees who are paid hourly, or which group was that when the presentation occurred? I'm sorry, sir. Which group was that?
Janice, we're talking to Janice, who are we asking?
All these people down here who presented to us, somebody got to answer.
I believe Janice gave us the presentation.
So are you talking about when we presented the information to the bus drivers? Is that what the question is?
When you presented the information to the board at the retreat about the employees, it was a certain group of, not necessarily a certain group of employees, but employees who were paid hourly or something were being changed over. There was a presentation, who, which one of you made? I'm just really not, I don't recall. Dr. Anderson?
At the board retreat, when it was presented, the question was asked, how do the different hourly employee groups feel about that? The answer is based upon we did focus groups. All employees in that particular subgroup was not surveyed. We did not do a district-wide survey for all of the impacted employees. Instead, we had pockets of employees from each of the different impacted groups to give us their feedback.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but when we ask how employees feel about it, we would like to be told if it was a focus group or if it was some kind of survey, because I remember asking specifically because I said, you know, that's a big change, you know, people get paid two weeks now, it's, you know, whichever way it went. I remember specifically, you know, being concerned about that, and everybody really downplayed that as, oh, no, everybody's fine with it, was the idea I walked away from. And I assumed that that was based on some kind of, you know, more than just a focus group, because I do have concern about focus groups. I do think a lot of times the people that are asked directly are gonna support. So I would definitely like more information about that and kind of how many people were surveyed out of the number of people that were gonna be affected, you know, by this, and what avenues they've had to kind of, because I commend Mr. Hailstock for coming and speaking up like he did on the public agenda, but, you know, if you have gotten any other negative feedback about it and whether or not that's been shared with us.
Ms. Buckner?
I just want to ask my same question, and that is, and that's during, we also discussed this at a work session, excuse me, a work session when you presented it, Mrs. Carter. My question then is, was, and is, is there a change in pay? Because I was concerned with the difference in every two weeks versus the first and the fifth. We were concerned, me, I think probably some other board members, was if there was a difference in pay, and my understanding from you was that there's no difference in pay between every two weeks and the one, and the twice a month. Is that correct?
The pay rate at which they are paid by the hour is not changing. However, the way we spread the pay will be different.
Will they get paid less?
No, they will not get paid less. Because it is, their pay is now being divided over 24 pay periods instead of 26 pay periods, the pay that they will get each paycheck will go up. However, during the year, they will get two less paychecks than what they would on the biweekly cycle. The pay, their total pay is not changing, it's just the frequency at which they are getting paid is changing, and therefore, the amount for each pay period is changing because the frequency is changing.
Would you also remind us why the change was considered?
The change, there were a couple factors that were considered with this. One was efficiencies through the district, that we are on multiple different pay cycles, trying to coordinate them all into one. The other part of that was the way the biweekly payroll was running, and the impact on dividing the spread pay over 26 pay periods with a 365-day year, and the impact that that was having in the shifting of that pay cycle back a day, causing our employees to actually be paid in advance. And this will stop that, it will correct that, and so that was a big reason for that. And the other is that there were, for the monthly cycle, which is being impacted much more significantly than the biweekly, that we have heard throughout the years that it is a hindrance to hiring employees, that it's a barrier for them to be paid once a month. So moving them to a more frequent pay cycle makes it more in line with other employers.
Ms. Chambers?
Can you explain how this was communicated to the bus drivers? Because you communicated it, well, not just the bus drivers, all hourly employees. Because if you communicated that you're actually, your paycheck is actually going to be more, it seems like the response may be different. Can you just explain sort of how that was done, just so that we know, you know, that we're not leaving anyone out?
So we have done several presentations with our different stakeholder groups, based upon their pay cycle and specific stakeholder groups. That presentation is collaboration with myself and Brandy Hoskin, who is the director of accounting. And so we explain how it changes, the change, and what will happen, and when that will happen for them. So part of the things that we explain for them is what their pay will look like moving forward, how their paycheck will increase, though it is not a change in their pay, so we want them to understand that their actual take-home dollar amount per paycheck will go up, but their take-home pay over the course of the year will not change, their salary or their hourly wage does not change. We also explain to them when it will happen. So each employee group has a different start date. So each employee group has a different start date. It has not started, the first start date isn't until the new fiscal year. And so we have already presented to multiple groups. The next group is next week for our custodial group. But none of the changes have happened yet. So many groups have already, over a month, that they've had the information and it won't happen for them until August.
That was a part of the, that was a part of the board ask. I do remember that part. We were asking you about how you were going to communicate that out. And so now you're telling us, okay.
And we still have the monthly group that we still need to meet with. We have met with, um, uh, most of the bi, we, we met with all of the bi-weekly, or coming up. Yeah.
You said you have one more group. We have one more group next week, we'll meet with them.
For the custodians. And then we will be doing Zoom session, um, for the monthly that are changing.
Okay, wait a minute, you have to keep your mic on.
I just have one more question, that makes me feel a lot better. Um, is there a way for them to give feedback after? Okay.
Yes, so there are a couple of ways for them to give feedback. There is a Google form, not a Google, it's a Google form. That we created for them to give feedback as well as the different departments that have been presented to have a contact specifically for their department. Because many of the departments that we've presented to, those staff members don't use device, don't have a device. They don't use a computer. And so they can either use the Google form or they have a point of contact within their department that they can touch bases with and then they'll enter the information to the Google form. We also, after the presentation, did a question and answer session with all of the presentations. And allowed, we recorded one presentation and so they have access to the recorded presentation. And also, the next step for everyone is to receive a letter from HR, which identifies what their last check will look like on their current pay cycle and what their next check will look like. They will have that and plenty of time to be able to adjust what their budget is. So they know what that change will look like for them. Um, and what we, the feedback that we've received thus far has been mixed. We have some staff members who are not eager about the change. We're not necessarily a part of the focus groups. It's very difficult for us to do, um, surveys with all of our team members. It's just very difficult, especially in our populations that don't have devices and work split shifts. But the feedback we've received thus far has been mixed. Either they don't like the change or they really, really love it because of how it impacts their deductions. That is something that we've heard the most about and we have lots of complaints about currently how deductions are done. And so this new process of finance really did a great job fixing that challenge. And it's not a, I'm not the finance person, so I can't really explain that.
I appreciate going through this because it's recalling, because we did have a lot of questions and a lot of ask of you all to do that. So I appreciate you going back over that because I had completely forgotten about it. Uh, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, um, in the, the focus group, I know you said y'all met, um, was there any bus drivers in the focus group? Did y'all meet with any bus drivers?
Yes, bus drivers, bus monitors, school nutrition, plant services, were in the focus groups that I led, yes.
Okay.
And did they give feedback?
Yes, they gave feedback. And so there's never going to be a hundred percent, we're all on board, but a majority supported it. And they were excited about how it impacts their paycheck with the deductions. So I can explain that to the best of my ability, I'll let Janice chime in if I get it wrong. Currently, the way we split deductions, most of the deductions come out on their first check that they're receiving in the month. And so they get a much smaller check. It's not evenly split. And it's very difficult for them to be able to balance their, um, the budget when you get a really small check and then you get a larger check later on in the month. So with this new process, it'll be evenly split amongst the checks. And so that is what we received the most positive feedback about, is that it helps them balance their budget as they're going throughout the month.
Did you want to add something else?
Yeah, just the fact of, um, yes, there are, like you said, not everybody is a hundred percent on board with it. Um, however, we do feel like it is a positive change. That peop- employees are not, while the pay changes is, um, less frequent, it is a consistent. It is on the first, um, or on the last day of the month and on the fifteenth. So it's a consistent, which makes it a little bit easier to budget with that. And that, like you said, the spread, the splitting of the benefits makes it equal for each paycheck. Um, and the money now, they're getting it just a little bit sooner. So it's not like they have, they're having to wait for money to come into them with this change. Um, there's not been a, a delay in the money coming in.
All right, so now what I could only suggest with you is because, you know, maybe you can take another round about, circle back, um, to receive some additional feedback, um, particularly from the groups, the group that is here tonight. Um, you, you presented it to us for an efficiency purpose. Um, and so just to make sure that all of the stakeholders are aware again, particularly the bus drivers who are here tonight and then, um, receive that feedback because they want to have some direct one-on-one, um, conversation with you all, okay? All right, all right, Ms. Tillery, hit your mic.
Oops, sorry. When we discuss focus groups, what is your formula for coming up with a focus group? Like, how, if you have, say, ten, you know, three thousand employees, what would be your core number? Yeah, what, what, but, you know, is there a certain percentage? Like, is it ten percent? You know, is there, what is your, how do you come up with a focus group and how many people are actually included?
I don't see it. Okay, there, uh, all right, there you go.
Thank you. So it depends upon the, the group. So the bus drivers, we have a advisory council that we work with for the bus drivers and the bus monitors and transportation, as well as we focus with, um, a lot of our recruitment and new hires. Some of the feedback that we received during the training for new hires as they're coming in. Because they are able to, they're just going through that process with, specifically with this. And so we were able to work with those classes as they came in the door. So we were able to get feedback from our brand-new employees as well as our veteran employees. And then with the other groups, with, uh, plant services and school nutrition, they are spread out throughout the school district. And with custodians, they're spread out throughout the school district. And so we want pockets from all regions. We divide it up into three regions, uh, that we have, um, region chiefs for, as well as the different grade levels. So we want to make sure there's a representative from each grade level and each region of the district. No, one grade level and each region. So it's at least three from each grade level.
Okay. And is it specifically chosen people or is it at random?
It's at random and we get volunteers. It's very difficult to get volunteers. So, but it's at random and we keep asking until we get somebody to volunteer from that area.
So in this group, there were how many about, in the focus group?
I don't know off the top of my head, I can get you that information.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right, thank you so very much for reviewing that. Action item six point zero one are the school start times. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Jackson, are there any additional questions? All right, we're, okay.
Just explain for the record once again. I know I'm repeating myself.
Hold on, there you go.
Well, I'm voting against it. Um, you know, my issue again is not with a later start time, but just how late it's going to be for the high school students. And the negative impact cannot be quantified, but at least eighty percent of an overwhelming amount of emails and comments I have received have been against this proposal. Um, I wish we had been allowed more flexibility with options. You know, a way to improve, but not as drastic a change until we had done the rezoning next year. That's my thoughts.
Ms. Tillery?
Um, and I agree a thousand percent, there needs to be a change. But I do agree with Lori that, um, the stakeholders should have had more input. The teachers, the bus drivers, the, the families that we currently have, to see how it's going to impact them for next year, because that could drastically change our busing needs. So I, one thousand percent thinks there, thinks, yeah, I can't talk. I do think there needs to be a change, but I don't think this is the change we need. And I don't think coming to a table and say, do it my way or no way, is a very good way to approach a problem. And so in my opinion, the lack of flexibility to work with everybody involved was the reason that I'm going to vote against it today.
All right, Ms. Chambers?
So, you know, I have to ask clarity questions. Um, so I definitely think that Lori and Nikki have brought up, um, good points. Um, but I also want to reiterate and make sure that I understand correctly that we have over a thousand kids that are staying on the bus over seventy-five minutes. Um, and they're arriving at school late. I want to check on that. And then my second question is for Dr. Lewis. As the chief operating off, officer, academically, do you feel like this is what's best for kids?
Let him answer the first question.
Okay.
Just to review the stats that were included in the presentation, we currently have six hundred and thirty students who have a bus stop time before six AM. We have one thousand eight hundred and ninety students who arrive to school fifteen minutes or late each day. We have one thousand seven hundred and fifty students who are still on campus at fifteen minutes or more after the bell rings. We have seven hundred and seventy students who arrive home after five thirty PM. We currently have twenty-nine AM routes that are seventy-five minutes or longer. And we have twenty-one PM routes that are seventy-five minutes or longer.
All right.
From my perspective, that's why I made the recommendation.
All right, Ms. Buckner?
I was, um, thinking that we had just previously talked about focus groups. And, um, the, there has been a focus group of Columbus High School, which, uh, uh, I would say that one hundred percent of that particular fo- focus group that called me, one hundred percent of that focus group was against the change. Now, how accurate is that one particular focus group on the entire, uh, Muskogee County, um, transportation? We're talking about three thousand kids, let's say, well, let's not get to school. Uh, they have to catch the bus before six o'clock and get home after five thirty PM. I've had, come, I've been contacted by, uh, a larger for, uh, focus group, focus groups from different areas. Focus groups of middle school parents and teachers who are, who, uh, in that focus group will be one hundred percent, uh, for the change. So when you're talking about the various groups, we're talking about one particular, I'll call it a focus group, that is against the change as opposed to the rest of the entire community. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, even given, let's take away the focus groups, let's take away everything. If somebody got to catch the bus that early in the morning, I would vote for it every single time to keep kids from catching the bus twen- twenty minutes before six o'clock and getting home later. To me, it's, it's, uh, you have to consider the entire community and not just one particular group.
Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, ma'am. You know, when I first saw this thing, I was, I was really sort of against it because I'm against thirty-three thousand children being moved again and the parents, because you're disrupting the lives of all these people. And it's a big deal when you talk about everybody in Columbus just about. And then I saw these numbers right here about the buses. And I even thought about the young man that wanted to play baseball at Randy McCullers. And we went through a whole lot for this one young man. We did, went through a whole lot for this young man so he could play sports. And he could play what he wanted to play, baseball. And we changed a whole policy. So this young man goes, we want to do for the students. And I heard somebody earlier say, well, this is, only so many students were talking about riding this bus. I mean, five, ten, fifteen percent might not ride it. But we've talked about one student on this other one and the board made a change for one student. Well, you know, just so you know, right here, number of students with a morning pickup time before six AM, six hundred and thirty children sitting out there before six AM waiting for that bus. Now, what could happen before six AM? With this, what if this was your child? And you're talking about six hundred and thirty out there and your child is out there, one of them. And I'm not talking about the one that's playing sports. All right, here's next. Number of students arriving to school fifteen minutes or more after the bell rings, one thousand eight hundred and ninety students. Eighteen hundred and ninety students arriving after the school starts. Now, that's totally unacceptable right there. And if you believe anything else, I mean, that's the most important thing right there is getting these children on time so they can get an education. Here's a number. Number of students picked up from school fifteen minutes or more after the bell rings, one thousand seven hundred and fifty children. All right, here's the last one. Number of students with an afternoon drop-off time after five thirty PM, seven hundred and seventy students. Thousands of children are riding this bus every day, much longer, an hour, two hours. Since I've been on this board for twelve years now, the biggest thing, and really it has been buses, children, getting on the bus, being late on the bus. I have heard more of that over the last twelve years than probably anything else but shortage. You know, all this, we all know because we was there. Now we have a chance to fix this problem. Probably the first time we've had a chance in twelve years to fix this problem. Let's fix the problem and give it a try. Let's make sure these students are at school on time, after school on time, and not on the school bus all doggone day. I'm voting yes to make a change.
And I just want to say, I agree with you a thousand percent. I just wish that we would ask how this change is going to directly affect transportation for our current students. Because we can't base the needs for next year on our current times. Because it's going to mess up everybody's schedule by changing the times. So if we'd sent out a survey when we first started doing this, saying, if we change the times, will you be riding a bus or riding in a car? And then we would have a snapshot of our actual students in school today and then we could address it and see how to fix it for next year. Because all these students that we're talking about this year, it's going to change with their siblings if they can't pick them up. Or, you know, it, it, we're comparing apples to oranges. With the time change, it changes everyone's needs. And if we would just ask them what their needs might be for next year, we would have a better idea of how to fix it accurately, is how I feel.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, Madam Chair, I, um, agree completely with, uh, Representative Cantrell. Uh, I'm not going to repeat what he said, but I, I do agree with him, but I would like to call for a vote.
We got a second?
Second.
Ms. Buckner, say. Okay, so we voting to call the question?
Yeah. Sounds like it.
So we got a motion by Ms. Jackson, a second by Ms. Buckner. All right, we need to hand vote to call the question. It's the, calling the question is, we're getting ready to take the vote with, in the discussion. All right. We got a motion on the table. All right, all in favor, we need a hand vote. One, two, three, four, five. That passes. All right, so now we're ready to vote on item six point zero one. We're going to, we're going to, we already, it already was on the table, so we're wa- we're ready to vote now electronically. You did? Did we vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody but who? Ms. Buckner? Mr. Cantrell?
Yes, ma'am.
He just did. Um, there it is. That passes. All right. Item six point zero two is the revised policy JB student attendance. Military, has that been on the table?
No. Wait, wait till June.
It's the June meeting. All right. Any other questions about that, board members, any? All right, six point zero three is, okay. What, what will be coming back for us at our next board meeting in June is the edit policy IDE co-curricular activities. Uh, six point zero four, student code of conduct for the school year twenty-four. We're ready to vote on that. Need a motion?
Pass. Motion.
Motion by Mr. Cantrell, second by Ms. Jackson, are there any questions? You got a question, Ms. Buckner? Yeah, okay. Hit your mic. Ms., Ms. Cray has a question?
Just because Ms. Chambers mentioned it, there was a change I'd asked for, I saw that that was done and I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, we are ready to vote now. All right, that passes, moving on to, hold on one second.
It goes into that, I know that's not an easy, um, task that we vote on. And we defer, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point zero five is the twenty twenty-three Georgia School Board Association delegates. for Ms. Buckner as the delegate and Ms. Chambers as the alternate. Motion by Mr. Cantrell, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. All right, that passes. Next item is six point zero six. Motion to approve by Ms. Chambers, the resolution Georgia Vision for Public Education, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. Six point zero seven is the new, uh, substitute placement services. Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any additional questions?
This is just a one-year contract, right?
This item six point zero seven is substitute placement services.
Yes, it is one-year contract. Uh, it's specifically, um, professional services, so we would look at it every year.
Okay, and then just, I think, as I say often, if we could just kind of get updates periodically through the year to see, because I'm very encouraged, it will make a big difference, but it is a lot of money. So I do want to kind of track and make sure that it is having the goals that, you know, you've set for it.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Ms. Hillary.
And I know that, um, I wouldn't hear mine, but I watched the meeting and I can't remember the answer when, um, were the current substitute teachers, you know, were they in the discussion about this new change? They were, because I know Lori said she asked about them working with.
Did we ask the employees?
The substitute teachers who are now not going to be working for Muskogee County, right? They're going to be working for this new company.
They'll be working for the new company. So there was not a survey that was with the substitutes. We were trying to find a, uh, a solution for the vacancies because it was so significantly impactful, negatively impactful to the school district. I was able to spot check to see what the interest was like. And I did not hear anyone, even experienced personnel, they immediately came back saying it was more like weekly pay. So that, that was more of what I got. I can look at it into it a bit further, um, to try to find the interest level again, because this is annual. We have a chance to see if it has positive impact, see how the substitutes respond to it. And we have the opportunity to make the changes as necessary if it doesn't work out.
We're just, in my opinion, we're making a lot of changes to our staff. A lot of changes all at once. And I think they don't feel like anybody's listening to them, so I just, if we already have this huge gap with substitutes, let's just try and get them on board before we come down and say something's changing, you know? You know, the bus drivers are getting, it's just a lot of the staff that we are currently struggling with are still, they're feeling a little nervous. So I just want to make sure we get, keep everybody on our side.
We, we'll make sure to do that, but I will tell you that the things that were complained about by the substitutes are the, are the things that are being offered by ESS. That's why, that's absolutely why we're doing it. They're, they would get more with them than they do from us.
In other words, you've been taking feedback all along.
Yes.
Not because you're recommending a change, so because of the feedback, you're coming back. This is a result of the feedback.
And that's all I want is for them to be our cheerleaders, for them to be excited.
Formal survey process, but it is, these are the regular concerns that are expressed to us from substitutes.
And as a matter of common sense, we had to do something about our substitute situation. Because we can't get enough substitutes in these classes. And there are some hard to school, field schools, some places substitutes won't go. We have a big problem. We had to have a solution.
You're, you're right.
And what we did was figure it out and hire this service because we do not have enough substitutes. That's a big problem. And that's, that's the problem that we are trying to fulfill here. And whether we surveyed it, we don't have to survey it, as I say, as a matter of common sense. We know we got to do something about substitute teachers. And this sounds really, what you have proposed, this service that you have found is very good because it creates a lot of benefits that substitutes were not generally having. Now, for retired teachers, you know, we, they substitute when they get rid or when they don't. You know, but it doesn't seem like it, it, it would be, uh, that disagreeable to them either from what your presentation was. But for new people coming in, we got to have new people coming in because we need substitutes. So for new people coming in, it's somewhat ideal for them because they actually getting a job with benefits. So, and we need substitutes, that's the bottom line.
And, and just to re, just to, you know, tag on to that, that was, um, the biggest consistent feedback from the board members because teachers are tired of having to cover two classrooms because we allow these people to be substitute teachers and they get to pick where they want to go and they won't go anywhere else. And so we leave a large number of schools void of having adequate coverage because we allow, the Muskogee County School District, allow these people to chair and pick these schools as substitute teachers. So this is going to address the overwhelming concern of teachers who are tired. They're tired of covering two classrooms, got to split up the class because they can't get a sub because we, all those people who are on that sub list won't go to certain schools, which is, I still stand against that. That's absolutely ridiculous and unacceptable. So hopefully this will, um, eli- alleviate that problem. Um, I, I, a lot of people don't agree with it. I'm, I'm speaking as myself. I, that is unacceptable to me that we can have that many people on the substitute list and have that many vacancies at schools because I don't want to go to a certain address, a certain side of town, or a certain school, or cer- that, that's un, un, unacceptable to me. So that, I'm on my soapbox because we're trying to move on. Go ahead, Ms. Carter.
I just wanted to say two things for Ms. Hillary. One of the things that will be very helpful is that there will be constant surveys of the substitutes. We'll get their, their feedback on a regular basis.
Hey, be careful how you use that word. Just say you're getting the feedback.
It's not me. ESS is, actually has it a part of their program, is to provide surveys to, uh, to them. But one of the other complaints at the very beginning of all of this was the, the pay and how long it takes to get your first paycheck through MCSD. And, and that was a huge contributor, a lot of feedback around that, and this would resolve that.
And please know, I support this. I just think that the presentation to our current employees, sometimes when we get them excited about it, it rolls out a lot better than if we do it and they feel like they were left out. So I'm just saying, if we get them excited on the front end and explain it to them and get them on board, then they have buy-in and then they're excited about it. And I just think that some of our employees and staff feel that they didn't have much buy-in on a lot of changes that we've made, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I was saying.
And I was just going to reiterate, I felt like every question we asked and everyone we posed had a positive answer to the benefits that would be given to our substitutes and the ones that would come on board. I couldn't, and you know me, I like to, I like to ask, and, um, it was all resounding, these are good things, other than they will technically be, um, the employees of someone else. All the other things seemed to go along with it, plus additional benefits, so, thank you.
Did it come up earlier? You relaunching it?
No, here it is.
Okay. That passes. Moving on to six point zero eight, the middle school athletic field upgrade. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any additional questions? All right, we're ready to vote now. All right, that passes. Moving on to six point zero nine, the contract for high school athletic field lighting. Motion by Mr. Cantrell, second. Ms., oh, Ms. Buckner, all right. Are, are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. Okay, that passes. I think we have one more. We got six, we got six point ten. You, you ready to go? Okay, six point ten is the athletic field upgrade phase four. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. All right, that passes. There was a motion by Ms. Buckner to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions or anything we need to pull out for additional questions or explanation comments? Okay, we're ready to vote now. All right, that consent agenda passes. I need a motion to go in executive session for disciplinary tribunal, a legal matter, um, and personnel matter. Motion by Mr. Cantrell, second. All right, we'll rate, vote by, with a hand wave, goodbye. All right, we're now in, in executive session. Let's go ahead and go to the back so they can clear out all this equipment and come back.